This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 21st, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. I would also like to announce the board did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal issues. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
I didn't have it up here.
Yeah, just give me two minutes. Sure.
Okay, the meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to approach the board for any non-agenda items? Is there anyone online? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Review Discussion Item, Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection, Disposal, and Recycling Services Contract, commencing January 1st, 2024. Review followed by discussion of bid results, contract letting date of July 26th, 2023. And I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. On Wednesday, July 26th, 2023, township officials open and read aloud in the meeting room the above referenced bid, which is a residential municipal solid waste collection, disposal, and recycling services, which would commence January 1st, 2024. The bid offered two options for terms. One was three years, which would encompass 2024, 25, 26. And then also another option for a five-year term, which would be 2024, 25, 26, 27, and 28. Pursuant to the First Class Township Code, the bid provides for five separate one-year option extensions following the final year of the contract, determined on whether a three-year or a five-year option is selected by the board. As part of the review of the bid package, the township compiled both a bid tabulation as well as refuse and recycling projections based on the 2024 bid figures. I would like to point out that two pieces of correspondence were received from JP Mascaro dated July 27th and August 8th. However, these materials were not considered as part of the review as they were after the bid opening, just for clarification. Also, the township staff did put together a municipal pricing comparison spreadsheet, looking at other similar-sized municipalities to determine where the pricing aligned. So, in summary, for the total bid for all curbside programs, including municipal solid waste collection and disposal, as well as co-mingled recyclables and curbside yard waste and bulk item collections, the three-year price for JP Mascaro for those items was $12,681,336. Waste Management, they were the low bidder for the three-year option, was $12,490,831. And then Whitetail was $17,559,842.96. For the five-year option, JP Mascaro was the apparent low bidder, $21,634,536. Waste Management came in at $22,393,838. And Whitetail came in at $30,331,143.87. Going through the materials that were compiled by township staff with respect to contract pricing, the township is looking at a price increase somewhere between around 62% from the current contract. So, for example, if, for reference, point of example, for a three-year contract, the price per unit per quarter for Mascaro was calculated to be $154.70 per quarter. For the annual price, it would be $618.80. Similar price, or I'm sorry, for the same term for Waste Management, the price per unit per quarter for the three-year term is $152.56, with the annual price of $610.24. For JP Mascaro, for the five-year contract, using, again, the township's current method for calculating prices, the price per unit per quarter would be $158.63. Annual price would be $634.52. Waste Management came in at, for five years, $163.73 per quarter, $654.92. That's for informational purposes. The bid is not structured in that manner. It's structured to be based on the total amount paid by the township, and then the township bills the residents. But I just want to make sure people understand, because our current pricing is $90, $95 per quarter. So, it is a significant increase. At this point, I'd like to briefly outline the options for your consideration. One would be to accept a three-year bid. Waste Management has submitted a complete bid and is the low apparent bidder for this option. Two, accept a five-year bid. JP Mascaro has submitted a complete bid and is the low bidder for this option. And finally, reject the bids and rebid at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Those are your three primary options. Your deadline for action pursuant to the terms of the bid specifications, the township has 45 days by which to render a decision on the bid. So, the deadline is Saturday, September 9th. So, the effective deadline with the final public meeting before that, unless the board schedules another special meeting, would be Wednesday, September 6th, the regular public meeting. So, at this time, I would ask if there's any questions from the board, and then we will endeavor to answer those questions.
Tom, thank you for your presentation, and thank you to staff for compiling all of the information into chart form for us to review. Thank you. I'll open up to the board if there are any questions on the information that's been presented to us, both provided prior to tonight's meeting, as well as what Tom has just reviewed. None of the commissioners have any questions? Yes, sir?
At which point, is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Yeah. Yep. Yes, so...
Can we bring that up on the screen at all? Is that, do we have the...
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
The refuse expense projections for bid would be the document, Rob. There you go. At the bottom. So, for JP Mascaro, the price per unit per quarter for the three-year contract price is $154.70, so that's $618.80 for the year. For the five-year price, it would be $158.63 per quarter, with an annual price of $634.52. And again, Mascaro was the low bidder for the five-year option, not for the three-year. Waste Management was the low bidder for the three-year, $152.56, $610.24 per quarter, or I'm sorry, for the year. And then for the five-year contract, $163.73 per quarter, $654.92 for the year. And that's based on how the township puts together the pricing for the entire duration of the contract.
Excuse me, sir. If you'd come to the microphone, this is a virtual meeting as well. They cannot hear your questions. If you'd turn on the microphone and just state your name and address, please.
Chris Bysel. So, on the one thing, is there was an increase percentage from year to year?
Yes.
What I saw?
Yes, we built in the 3% increase for inflation, adjusting for inflation from year to year.
But I thought I saw one up higher.
Yes, that's...
That was like 1.7, yeah, that one. Is that what their contract is saying, so Mascaro?
Correct.
In 2024, they're gonna, it's gonna go up that amount?
Right, so...
Each year, based from the, as part of the contract?
Right. So, you have the initial increase from '23 to '24, and then you have each percentage calculated out for the rest of the duration of the contract.
That's locked in the contract?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Tom, if you would just clarify, this is for refuse, recycling, and bulk items?
Yes, and yard waste.
As the services that the township currently provides?
Correct.
For residents under our current contract?
Correct. We didn't deviate from the current contract in terms of the services provided. The only thing that we took out was the Christmas tree collection, which Public Works would conduct. And then we also, the primary difference is, we built in, for the equipment, the initial requirements for how old the equipment has to be, which was an increase from the last contract, in terms of needing newer equipment, increase of services, I should say. And the other thing that we put into this contract was having a dedicated customer service line and specified, you know, the parameters for that, based on the feedback from township residents and township staff.
Very good. Can you give us just a brief overview of how that dedicated line would work?
Yes. Basically, they would have to have either a local or toll-free number, and the person would have to be available during the times that collections are taking place to answer, you know, to the amount that is practicable, without pushing it to an automated service or a voicemail. So, you know, recognizing there would be times when there's a lot of volume coming in. But the intent there is to ensure that while the collection is actually taking place, that someone related to the operator and the hauler is available, so that they can adjust on the fly as necessary and make collections to the amount, again, that's practicable.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public? I saw another hand. Very good. At this time... If you'd come to the microphone, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. My question was if the bulk item thing was going to change. As many might not remember, 1985, before we started trash collection, a lot of the rural roads, my road, Ridgeview, became dumping grounds for stuff. So, that was my main concern. In the minutes from May 17th, there was a lot of discussion on that item, so that's why I was...
And the township actually built in the bid to have weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly different pricing, and the same pricing came back from the two low bidders for three and five years, for either of those options.
Very good. Thank you.
Same meaning, the bidders that submitted their bid, they didn't have a differential in price between weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly collection. There were differences between the two bidders, however, to be very precise.
But not for the actual collection?
Correct.
Very good. Is there anyone online? Yes, okay. Just have them state their name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Cindy Smith. I live at 2442 Huckleberry Road, and I'm also speaking for the resident at 2436 Huckleberry Road. We've had major problems with Waste Management. I have a recycle, one of their recycling bins or toders out front over a week now. Calling, emailing, nothing. So, in my opinion, they should not even be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Daniel Spiegel. I live at 1314 Antler Court. I'm not sure if my question is, well, I gotta ask it. Has any consideration ever been given to having individual residents individually contract with a refuse haulers?
I'll ask our township manager to answer that question.
The answer is, yes, it's been discussed in the past, but ultimately, the township has decided to go with a single hauler due to concerns with collection times, as well as infrastructure concerns with the roadways, as well as something that was alluded to a little bit earlier today, this meeting, was bulk collection concerns with illegal dumping, dumping in streams, and so forth. So, you know, there's an economy of scale that can happen when you utilize a single hauler, and there's also concerns with, like I was saying, with illegal dumping and not everyone doing what needs to be done in terms of recycling and making sure to get rid of your refuse.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks. I figured that was something like that. May I follow up?
Of course.
Has there any thought been given to tiered charges, you know, where you can only put out so large of a toter if you pay less?
Again, that is something the township could evaluate, was not included as part of this bid package.
All right. Thanks for letting me bring it up, though. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, and thank you, Tom, for answering. No one else online? No other questions from anyone? Sir? Yes, come to the microphone.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see everybody again.
Could you just identify yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm going, I'm about to. I'm JP Mascaro III from JP Mascaro and Sons. As Mr. Petrucci indicated, we're the lowest bidder on the five-year option presented to you tonight. And I came before you a few weeks ago, and Commissioner Rosberg asked me to make sure I was back, so I am here. And I have with me my team as well. Sam Augustine, who's our Director of Sales, who's been with our company for 30, I mean, for 40 years. Al DiGennaro, who also works in our bidding department, he's been with the company 32 years. Ryan Gibney is our sales manager, he's been with the company almost 10 years. And Chris Karas, who's our local manager, who's been with the company almost 13 years. And then, obviously, myself, I've been around for a few years with the company. So, I just wanted to touch on a few things that I think are important to consider in terms of when you're considering the three and the five-year option. Mr. Augustine is going to get up and speak with respect to the pricing, with respect to the three and the five-year. But I just wanted to reiterate a few points that I made a few weeks ago. Obviously, we're the only locally owned and operated family business in the region that does these types of contracts. We have done work here in the township in the past. We look forward to hopefully being the contractor to perform the contract in the future. We are the best situated company for your long-term needs. Our infrastructure is close by. We have an operating division that's less than five miles from the township, which will enable us to provide you with an excellent level of service, and as well as an excellent level of customer service, which I know was an important part of this specification. We also have a transfer station and recycling processing center that is located just four miles from your facility, where we can handle your waste materials, as well as your recycling materials, which would be then transferred to really what are the crown jewels of our company, and make up the bulk of our infrastructure, which is the Pioneer Crossing landfill, which is in Berks County, which receives 90% of its waste from the surrounding seven counties, a lot of municipal waste from the Lehigh Valley. We're in great standing with the regulatory agencies. We've received awards at the landfill. We have significant capacity moving forward. We're in good standing with our neighbors. We have no outstanding issues at all at the Pioneer Crossing landfill. Next to the Pioneer Crossing landfill, we have Total Recycle. Total Recycle is a unique facility. We invested $25 million into a state-of-the-art recycling plant. It's really become one of the most premier recycling plants in the nation. We've been, received awards. We've received grants from companies nationwide to improve our infrastructure there, and we would be able to process and handle your recyclable materials for the long term at that facility. I wanted to touch on one of the components of the bid that I think is of utmost consideration. Disposal is a big portion of the cost as it relates to the contract that's in front of you. Probably approximately 50% of the cost is the disposal of your waste materials. That market, obviously, is dictated by several things. Obviously, the operating costs that we incur, which we all know in everything we do in life, costs have not gone backwards. In fact, they've escalated rather rapidly in all aspects of life. But in our business, and particularly in the landfill business, that has escalated even greater than the average costs in society. Yellow equipment has almost doubled in the last four years. That's the equipment needed to operate the landfill on a daily basis. The costs related to regulatory compliance, gas management, has all significantly increased over the last three years. Leachate management, which is the wastewater that's created in the landfill, that has caused a significantly increase for all landfill operators across Pennsylvania because of the recent trend of municipalities selling their wastewater treatment plants to private industry, and the rates have significantly increased to all of the operators of landfills across the Commonwealth. So, that cost is rising at a greater rate than other costs. The other element to cost related to disposal is supply and demand. And here in the Lehigh Valley, you have certain facilities that are accessible to service municipalities here in the Lehigh Valley, and that's changing, right? Our competitor that's low on the three-year bid, they have a landfill in Plainfield Township. They have an uncertain future at that facility, whether or not they'll be continuing to operate. And I believe their bid with respect to the five-year options here reflects that uncertainty. Our proposal represents a very firm, cost-effective, long-term option for the township. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sam to talk about the pricing.
Thank you.
Sam Augustine, and of course, I've been introduced already. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's very important. Obviously, this is a huge contract for the township. You're seeing a large increase, certainly, that's going to affect the residents. There is a reason for that large increase. JP has brought up a lot of the reasons, but over the past five years, we've seen these unprecedented cost increases in our industry, and I'm sure that this board and this township has seen similar increases in other areas. Our wages have skyrocketed up also over COVID, and we've seen all the contracts that we've been involved in, many that only had one or two bidders. You actually had three bidders, a national, largest national company in the country, ourselves, one of the largest privates, if not the largest private in the country. And it's quite a large township. You have 7,500 units. We're serving probably over 100,000 residents in eastern Pennsylvania, probably many more than that, and we have probably in the neighborhood of 75 to 100 contracts, or probably 300,000 residents with 75 to 100 contracts. But mainly, what I wanted to tell you tonight is, I'm going to just read a list down quickly. Lower Providence has 7,000 units. They went with a seven-year contract, seven years. Washington Township locally took a five-year contract. Pottstown, with 8,000 units, took a five-year contract with two one-year options. Whitmarsh, seven years, 5,500 units. Bridgeport took five years. Clark Summit Upstate took five years. Coopersburg took five years. Bristol took seven years. They took five years with two option years right up front. And Falls Township, which is a smaller township upstate, took five years. And finally, Carbondale, the city of Carbondale, with 4,000 units, just took a 10-year contract with Mascaro. So, this era of rising costs is not stopping, and we feel it's going to be very advantageous to this township to consider the five-year contract. Also, if you take a look at our contract, we reset our prices from five years ago. We bid this contract five years ago. We bid it very competitively, as we're bidding it now, and we look at our costs, and we bid for the long term. And our prices from five years ago went up about 40%. If you look at our prices, it went up about 40%, and 40% to 45%. But our last year would have been 2024, and we're starting this contract about 37% higher than what our last year would have been under the last contract. So, we're bidding this competitively over the five years. And if you look at our bid, over the five years, after the first year, which albeit is higher than Waste Management, we only go up 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5%, up through the five years. So, we're giving you a long-term, stable contract. There is not going to be, by the way, you had a contract here that was originally advanced disposal that became Waste Management. I vow to you, I've been with Mascaro 40 years, it's going to be JP Mascaro to start this contract, it's going to be JP Mascaro to finish this contract, should you award it to us tonight. You've had, I believe, about 10 years of experience with our company. You're assured, Mr. Petrucci pointed out, in this bid, you put in this bid that you want a local call number, okay? Maybe you put it in there because of this. When you have Mascaro for 10 years, you just called the office, 315 Basin Street, okay? That's where you called. You had a supervisor in the township, okay, with all the collections. Now, do we make mistakes? Sure, we made mistakes, but you call down to Basin Street, somebody picks up that phone. That's how all of our facilities operate. We're a local company at all of our facilities. We have local people, okay? We've pointed out how many years that these people have been with our company. So, tonight, you're making a huge decision, okay? You have a fair price. Prices have gone up far higher, and I know they're going up 60% a year. It's going to be $50, basically $50 a month on average over the five years. If you take a three-year contract, it's $48, okay? And you have no guarantee after three years that Waste Management will, it's a mutual, it's by mutual consent on any additional year, by mutual consent, okay? But we've guaranteed five, okay? We've guaranteed five. Again, and it's $50 versus 48. Why would you go out to bid, again, after three years and not guarantee yourself five years, okay? So, any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer them. And one last thing, one last thing that I forgot to say. If you took a five-year contract, if you took a five-year contract five years ago rather than a three-year contract, your price for the last year would have been $2,635,000 versus Waste Management's bid in the first year is $3.9 million. That's 1.4 million more for the first year of the contract. So, obviously, this contract is going to go up. The first year is the most pain, and then it evens out over the five years. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And again, if there's any questions, we would be glad to answer them. And it's great to have the opportunity to present this material to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Just a few comments. I'm Al DiGennaro. I work with Sam and JP, and I worked extensively on our bid. I just... I just wanted to say a couple of things. Sam mentioned that the price is so much a week or a month different, but if you do the math and break it down per week, if you award a three-year contract to Waste Management, the per-week collection is $10.78. If you award a five-year contract to our company, and I'm sure this could be verified, it's $11.28. So for the difference of having that long-term security, it's 48 cents a week, not even a cup of coffee at Wawa. Another thing I wanted to mention to you is, we have 13 municipalities that we service in the Lehigh Valley. We can't service them all. No one can service all your communities. The public companies pick and select their companies, municipalities, so do we. But but I would submit to you that we have the most communities of any company in this region, and there's a reason for that, because we have the best infrastructure. We have the closest transfer station. We have our own landfill that's in good stead with the DEP, and we have our own state-of-the-art transfer facility. Sam mentioned the price. I I think it's telling, and and you obviously you don't have a crystal ball. When you went three years ago, you went with a three-year contract. I'm sure if you knew the price was going to be where it is today with the pandemic, you would have went with a five-year contract. But sometimes, the best evidence of what to do in the future is what's happened in the past. So three years ago, you had the opportunity to lock in for a five, and respectfully, you hadn't done that before, and you opted not to do that. But these are very unique times in our industry. We've gone to meetings where we were awarded contracts, and there was no other bidder. This time, you have three bidders. You're a sophisticated township. Your bid specs are excellent set of bid specs. I review and bid specs for 32 years. They're 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 very succinct. You provide your residents with the level of services that I think this community warrants, and to make any changes would go backwards. And as for the pricing, the fourth year, if you look at the numbers, Waste Management's price is $4,419,840. Our price for the fourth year is $4,761,000, a $341,000 difference, meaning we're lower by $341,000 in the fourth year. If you go to the fifth year, without taking up your time, if you compare the numbers, the difference is 608,000. Why is that such a difference? Because they do not have the infrastructure locally that we have. They're the largest company in the world. We don't do business in 50 states like they do. They can certainly pick up trash, but in this Delaware, in this Lehigh Valley, we have the most sophisticated network, and that's why we're able to do this. And Sam was talking about our costs going up, and I think your your staff showed you what happened after the after the initial shock with the pandemic, it reset. We only went up 1.74% from 24 to 25. Waste went up 5.99%. I'm looking at your handout that I got offline, that your staff prepared. The next year, we went up 1.9%. We didn't go up 2.5, as Sam said. I think he may have been averaging it. Waste went up 6.01%. Again, in 2027, we went up 2.68%. They went up 8%. And lastly, in 2028, we went up 2.5%. They went up 7.99%. They're way more sophisticated as a business operation than we are. They have accountants, and they're all over the country. If they don't think they can do this job cheaper than this, that tells you something. We showed you our price for five years, and and significantly, that there's a big difference. And the reason why we're doing it cheaper is because of our infrastructure. And this is a community that we identified. We can't bid on all the contracts. We picked this. We think we're the 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 best opportunity for you. Respectfully, while you always have an option to throw the bids out, you have three bids here. I think Whitetail telling you what their infrastructure is, why they're so much higher, and then you have Waste, then you have us, really respectfully, for a five-year contract, we submit the best number, and I would seriously suggest that that would be what you should do to lock in for the five-year term. You know your community better than I do, but you're going to the supermarket, you're buying gas, you're doing all these things. Nothing's getting cheaper, and this will be a way for you to guarantee your residents. I doubt seriously that if you said to your residents, for 48 cents more a week, we can make sure we're locked in for five years, as opposed to risk the possibility of having a significant increase in a new bid, or the three-year vendor not exercising the option that, you know, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And we appreciate this opportunity, and I think we should be awarded a contract for five years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. If you'd please come up to the microphone, give us your name.
My name's Ron Carlson. I'm with Waste Management. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. JP Mascaro pretty much spelled out the pricing. As you can see how close it was, that's what the pricing is now with your competitor communities. It's just evolved into that. And the transportation industry itself has taken a huge blow. Equipment is outrageous nowadays, and if you get it on a timely basis, you're lucky. Anyway, we do have a transfer station, which is about a mile from this facility right now, our Hinkle Transfer Station, and we do bring volume from that. Our landfills, and there are several in the area that are up for expansion. That's a decision that has to be made by the DEP and the surrounding communities. We don't foresee a problem with that. We are building a state-of-the-art recycling facility at our GCS landfill that will probably be completed in within the next two years. It will replace our Allentown facility that we use now in North Hampton for separating and marketing our materials. But one thing I just wanted the board to recognize in regard to the three-year, there are extensions with that as well as the five-year contracts, and they do hold that last-year price with the five-year and the three-year extension. I just wanted to elaborate that with the board so you understand that. We are the low bidder for the three-year contract. We prefer to be awarded the three-year contract. We will talk about the extensions. As as you know, they are a bilateral, where a mutual agreement between the township and the hauler. That's about all I have to say right now. JP Mascaro pretty much spelled out the issues in the transportation industry, and that's why our pricing is where it is. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience with any comments? Anyone else online? I'll open it back up to the board if there's any questions.
I have a question.
Well, I do have a question. Maybe, Tom, you can answer it for me. It's not only cost that we're looking at, but we're looking at service. And we were talking about a dedicated line for our customers. Do any of the companies provide a searchable service map that a resident could take a look and see exactly where you are, so they know, okay, you're running late, you're running early, they're on their way to me? So you could, you know, technology has improved. Is there a way for people to see exactly where the company is?
This is a fact. I'm not I'm not amplifying, but I'm not bringing up anything that's not already in in existence with our company. Every community, and even in the last contract, every community, we put out a a handout or a flyer. It's pretty sophisticated. It goes to every home in the community and tell and and indicates what days, what days are the pickup, what are the what are the what are the items for trash and recycling that should be put out, okay? When to have the when to have the trash out at night. It indicates everything about the contract. It also has the line to the to the office. We have a residential person that will be answering answering that line that would be fully knowledgeable about the township and where the truck where the truck is, is, what's going on with the trucks, and we'll be in touch with the supervisor that needs to be in the township on collection days. So our offices are at 315 Basin Street, and which is literally probably five miles from here. So we're very, very familiar with local act, local municipalities. We also have every every 30 to 60 days, there's a there's a, we have a performance sheet that we go out and generally meet with the assistant manager or the manager that grades us on our on our collections. And those are faithfully kept up with, and we've had excellent reviews, good or excellent reviews from the municipalities that we have. So we pay, we would pay close attention to this township.
But let me add something just specifically to 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 your question regarding searchable maps. We do equip our vehicles with GPS technology, so we do track them. However, our system monitors a bunch of different things, including maintenance, truck performance, and things, so we don't make that available to the public to to go live. But they certainly would be able to call the dedicated number, speak to our customer service representative, who would be able to provide them with that up-to-date current information as to how the route was progressing and where they would where they were on that particular day.
And I want to clarify one thing. So because that was not part of the bid specs, if if either entity were inclined to do that, it would be voluntary only. Yep.
Sir, yes.
I live locally. I live 15 minutes up the road in North Whitehall Township. I wanted to speak to about the GPS, similar to JP Mascaro. We have a tracking system as well. It's tied through our cameras for safety and stuff like that. So yes, we could not provide that to the public because it actually records the truck's videos and stuff like that of what the driver was doing at the time. It's for our use to track our truck. So if a customer would call up, we could see exactly where he was at that point in the day. So if they said, hey, you were, you missed my street, well, we can see exactly what time we're on the street of the service and stuff like that. But unfortunately, for public view, we can't present that to the residents because it's safety sensitive in that regard. But we do have the feature to track, see where they're at, at what time of the day, and then we can see if they've been on the road, or if he's in the area, what time he's going to be there. Generally, we run our routes the same way every day of the weeks, so the resident can kind of know, you know, normally you're in my area about 10 o'clock. So if she's calling at 6 o'clock, and we're normally there at 10 o'clock, you know, give us a couple hours, we'll be there. If not, you know, 11 o'clock, we'll be, you know, hopefully around by that time. But if not, you know generally when we're going to be there, give or take, just based on, you know, we don't, we don't try and run our routes in a different area, you know, unless the township request, which came up with Route 309 with the safety of Route 309. We started an hour early to accommodate the township to get on 309 because it became a safety hazard with our trucks being on the road at its, you know, rush hour traffic anytime like that. So we try and do it early to accommodate the township to get off that road, and it's only better for our guys, too. They're not out there in the thick of things, so. But we do have it. It's just unfortunately, we can't prevent that, you know, present that to the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just want to ask both of you guys a question? Actually, I have two questions. I have several accounts with someone else, not locally, and I get a text message that they've picked up or they didn't pick up. Do you guys do that?
Yeah, come back to the microphone, though. That's okay.
Waste Management has a feature for our commercial businesses where they can actually go online and see whether they were serviced or not, or when the truck's going to be there within a certain amount of time. That is a service that we do provide for our commercial businesses. And if something would happen, and a truck breaks down, and it's running late or something like that, you would receive a message at that point saying, hey, the route is running late. So that is a feature that we do provide for our commercial businesses, just for that reason, yes.
We do, we do not have that for residential services as well.
That's fine. I just, all right. My my next question is, it's more of a of a comment, too, to our township, to both Tom and Herb. I'm not in the trash business, not in the recycling business, but I'm able to intelligently, I think, digest the the facts, the figures, and make an intelligent decision on behalf of the residents of South Whitehall Township, at least I hope I can. But my question is to our township administration, looking at the three and the five. Now, I know, obviously, you don't make the decision, the VOC does. But where are you leaning as a township fiscally for the three or five year?
We've, we've spent a lot of time evaluating that question from all multiple angles. And honestly, the five-year option does make the most fiscal sense because of on the backend, you know, recognizing the fact that overall, it's it's a huge jump in that first year in 2024, regardless of the option. But being able to, recognizing the issues with disposal that are probably coming, that have been mentioned tonight, in terms of these costs will just continue and continue to exponentially increase, the longer-term option does make more sense. If you're just asking me in a vacuum, what's better, three or five years, my answer would be?
No, I appreciate the candor on that and and looking at the numbers, and do we want to be back here in three years? And I don't believe, again, I would say personally, so I don't find anyone else, that anything we're doing today, be it trash, recycling, so many things we hear, I don't see anything going down, unfortunately, for not only the for the residents. And I do agree that our first year will be a sting, no matter if it's three or five. And like like anything, you you have to deal with it and get over it. So I appreciate your your opinion on that and thought. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Yeah, I've had the opportunity to see the waste industry more close up in previous lines of work. So, you know, I will say it's a it's a huge unknown right now, and that is a huge factor into my into that recommendation in terms of where this region is going to dispose its trash.
Thank you for your guidance, Tom. Any other questions? Commissioner Osborne?
Commissioner Roth, go ahead.
No, you first.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions, and this would be actually addressed to both firms who are here this evening. Understanding our obligation is to award the contract, if one is awarded tonight to the lowest responsive bidder, but I have questions that I would personally like to understand, and therefore can converse intelligently with our residents as they, you know, will be impacted if we were to proceed with the bids in front of us at any point in time. So my first question actually was kind of addressed by Mr. Mascaro. Thank you. It was the cost components of your business, and I think that's important for us as a board to understand what they are, but also for the residents. And Mr. Mascaro, you had classified the the disposal cost is about 50%, and I'm interested in the leachate topic of that, but I won't get into that tonight. I'm going to stay high level. Wages was also one of the cost components, which is, you know, understandable as well. But one I don't fully understand, and I was hoping that you can explain, and then I'll give the same opportunity if Waste Management wants to weigh in on it as well. And that's the supply and demand part of your business. What did you mean by that?
Well, I specifically was referring to the disposal and the disposal allocation of for the landfill, on the landfill side, right? There's, there's only so many landfills that are accessible to the Lehigh Valley. I, we both have transfer stations, but still, from there, going outward from the transfer stations, there still is only so many landfills and so much landfill capacity that is available. And there are landfills in this region that have uncertain futures. Obviously, they have, biggest company in the world have multiple landfills, but one of their main disposal facilities, which is, you know, I wouldn't classify it as per se in the Lehigh Valley, but it's very close to the Lehigh Valley, has an uncertain future. The Bethlehem landfill has an uncertain future. They just had a very important court ruling go against their future. So right now, the the available tons in this market for disposal is, has a finite number in the short term, but But what that is going to be in the long term is really uncertain. And as a result, if there are less tons available, the, the supply of tons would be lower, available tons for disposal, and the cost would consequently most likely rise.
So you're referring to the supply of available land and the demand to use that land?
Available landfill tons that are available on a daily basis.
Okay. So maybe I'll, I'll go through my three questions. That was one. And then if Waste Management would like to weigh in, I think that'd be instructive as well. But let me go to the second one. Understanding, understanding that this, if, if we were to proceed either tonight or in the future with awarding either bid or this particular bid, it's going to have a significant impact on the finances of our residents. And, and you acknowledge that, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you doing that because it will. So it leads me to this question. What cost reductions have you as a business pursued in order to minimize the cost that you know is going to affect us as residents?
Right, so obviously, as a, as a privately owned enterprise, we're, we're looking at costs on a daily basis in all aspects of our business to minimize our costs because it has a direct impact on, on our bottom line. So we look at every single cost center within our business on a very regular basis. But the realities of the situation are, we can't control how much Mack trucks or International are selling their chassis to us or Waste Management for. We can't dictate what the, the body manufacturers, the compaction body manufacturers are selling those for. And those costs have escalated at numbers that would stagger you if you were in our business. And this is the same for Waste Management and for Mascaro. But the costs of, of garbage trucks has really, in the last five years, almost doubled, which is, is, you know, and you're not talking about $50,000 items. You're talking about, you know, half million dollar pieces of equipment that would service your, your, your contract. So these are big items that, that have a big cost value to them. Labor, we're all in the same boat with labor. The demand after pandemic for drivers has really caused wage pressure in that part of the business. They're paying more for drivers, we're paying more for drivers. The increased amount of trucking, and, and that goes on, the economy puts wage pressure on the diesel mechanic side of the business for both of us. And that's why you see your overall bids are significantly higher than they were three years ago. Obviously, I think, you know, one of the reasons we've been around for 60 years and have not gotten eaten up by the big companies is we do an excellent job, day in and day out, every day, of making sure that we can compete with guys like Waste Management and, and keeping costs in line. But to your point, I think it's an important factor, and I know it's not in the, per se, the, the award factor on this, but there were some other items that were bid here, which when you're, when you're going to be increasing your residents in the manner you are, you know, you have an aging fleet of carts in the township, and there are replacement costs then, and certainly over a five-year contract, some of those carts are going to replace. Our price is significantly more affordable for your residents than Waste Management's cart price, which, you know, ultimately over time would, would maybe help the residents out. Or the extra bulk costs, again, ours are significantly lower than Waste Management's. I know they're not factored in the award, but they're real dollars and cents that your, that your residents are going to have to put out over, over the life of this contract. So there's something to, to be considered as well.
So to summarize, would it be fair to say that a lot of these costs related to your business are not in your control, and you just need to respond to them and, and essentially pass that cost on to the, your customers?
That's in, in a nutshell.
Okay. Although you did point out a couple, you know, smaller components of the service, the carts, you know, that you're, okay. So if this is largely, this business is largely out of your hands in terms of cost, which I understand, I'm being respectful of that, what can we do as residents to help you show us how we can change our habits, if that's what needs to happen, in order to minimize the, the cost of this particular service? What, what can we do?
Well, unfortunately, given the situation we're in, I don't know that there's much we can do right now. I mean, you, you put a specification on the street that had certain requirements.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about five, 10 years in the future, you know.
You know, a lot of this is, is dictated by, you know, forces that, that none of us in our industry can, can control. You have a very comprehensive system in place for trash, recycling, yard waste, bulk. The last thing I think your residents would want to do would be to be paying a premium price and to cut services. And really, cutting services is really the only foolproof way of, of, of reducing those costs. So I think it's unfortunately just the state of the world that, that we all live in, in our industry and, and, and in our lives in terms of this particular cost increase at this time.
I, you know, I'd, I'd hate to walk away from whenever we make a decision tonight or sometime in the future to feel that we're helpless, we have no control over this. So let me just press one other thing, because I don't have a full understanding of your business. But so if I have a garbage cart and I fill it halfway versus full way, and so does every one of the neighbors, you know, everyone in South Whitehall, does that reduce the cost for our township going forward, not, not in this bid? How do we do, what do we do?
Sam prepares the bids. Yeah.
Partially, but.
I say.
Mister, you are, you are presenting some excellent questions. You really are. Right now, the, the state mandated recycling in 1988. We put in, we put in, in 2016, one of the most sophisticated recycling facilities in the country. It's recognized as that. I'm, I'm not just saying, it's recognized by 100, 100 of the top, top manufacturers, retailers in the country. They've, they've actually awarded us monies, okay, to recycle extra plastics. So you think that's all good, and it is all good. You're taking, you're taking, you're taking recycling and taking it out of the waste street, okay? Which your people are doing. You have an excellent record, okay? But now, because of China, the economy has, has just, the economy has really faltered in China. Recyclables cost more than trash to process, okay? They're sold, and we still process and sell them. That's the, that's the, that's the law of the state, and it should remain the law. So the reduction in trash doesn't necessarily turn out to be less dollars because recyclables are at, at a low, at a low ebb right now, okay? They'll come back, they'll come back at some point, but they're not at a low ebb. But the regulatory, JP pointed this out. Regulatory industry has really changed with the, with the, with the landfills. And now leachate, we're, and you talk about us trying to reduce costs. We just went through a leachate, basically some leachate changes to, to try to drastically reduce our leachate costs because you just can't accept some of these increases that are coming through. And you pointed out the manufacturers and such. You just can't accept some of these increases that are coming through. But a lot of people have piled on because of, you know, what is happening in the general economy. And I also wanted to point out, just to, to your residents hear this tonight. Since 2000, if you go back to 2009, okay, and you go all the way to 2028, it's 19 years, okay? In, in, up until this contract, go through 2000 to 2028, your contract has only gone up about four and a half percent a year. This township has enjoyed very little increases. And this not, it's not only this township, this is all through Eastern Pennsylvania. The prices stayed relatively constant with the general economy. And now there's been a huge reset, you know, due to COVID, due to the labor issues, okay? And so these, these contracts, you know, it's not unusual for, for contracts to be going up 80, 100%. And yours, yours actually went up lesser than that about 60%. Okay? But again, thank you for those questions.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. Ron, is there any, would you like to address any one of those three or all three?
Thank you very much.
And I, I do this not really to put you on the spot because I'm doing it respectfully because, you know, I'd like all of us to be walking away tonight thinking that there might be something that we can do to help ourselves.
Well, I'll tell you, in our industry, I can give you a good example. We've ordered trucks two years ago that we still haven't received. The supply and demand, which you asked about, we have trucks sitting for four months waiting on parts nowadays. It's absolutely outrageous. And what we have tried to do with municipalities is meet prior, talk about some of the, the requirements on their contracts. This contract here had some strict equipment requirements, requiring equipment, a third of your fleet had to be new, a third of your fleet had to be within three years old, and a third of your fleet could be five. That caused huge price increases that we have to pass on. With or without equipment, if we have to lease equipment, that's double what our actual purchased equipment would depreciate per year.
Ron, can I hold that thought with you for a second? No, I'll just, I understand your answer. Thank you.
Okay. There's, there's, the toter issue was brought up. Such an unpredictable expense, we're putting that together at worst-case scenario. Some of the, some of the toters that are out on the street here are 20-plus years old. And what you get, seeing it's an automated operation, if it cracks, the hauling company broke that toter and they have to replace it at their cost. So there's things in the contract that really should be looked at, whether this contract is awarded tonight or the next one down the line. Because there's, there's costs that are being passed on to the hauler that I feel are, are just a little substantial.
Thank you. My third question is, from your perspective, your business, is there anything that we can do as residents to lighten the burden of trash disposal, waste disposal going forward? I don't mean in this contract period, but I mean five to 10 years out.
You could, you could probably do something for your seniors. Limit what they can put out. Municipalities have done a tag system for senior citizens that have one bag. There's options like that for disposal. If your disposal decreases, it'll definitely be in your next bid. But your limits are the same right now, so that contract is going to run out with the, with the disposal limits that you're experiencing right now.
Thank you for indulging me.
I do have, Commissioner Osborne took my cost-related.
Question specifically for this gentleman?
It's for both.
Okay.
It's for both bidders. Since Commissioner Osborne took my cost-related question, I do have a question about the service. And it's not specifically related to this bid. Obviously, routine issues are common throughout the industry, delayed pickups, et cetera. With respect to more chronic issues, the, the same streets where trash collection is missed, it happens among all haulers. It's not particular to either Waste Management or JP Mascaro. So I know Mr. Mascaro talked about when residents call in and they, you know, they report a complaint, they're given maybe information. But for some of the more chronic issues, for example, a standalone street in a neighborhood where pickup is consistently not happening, what is, is your process internally for taking those resident complaints, which may come from multiple houses on the same street over a given period of time, taking stock of those complaints, and then formulating a plan to improve the service or at least get the service to the residents that, that is required? What, what does that process look like? I think a lot of residents would, would benefit from knowing that, that when they call in a complaint or an issue, especially if it's multiple times that, that action is taken on the internal side. So I'd like to give you the opportunity to talk about that process if it's formalized within your company and to both bidders as well.
If we have a common area that's having issues, my, my operations managers here with that, but they do a hot list area and that, on our route sheets for our drivers, they will highlight that if it's a repeat issue. They'll identify it if it's laid out or whatever the situation is there. But they do a hot list, like I said, on their route sheets, and they'll take those sites into consideration and double-check them to see what the problem is. It could be a placement issue, it could be a not-out, it could be a driver not familiar with the area, why they're on vacay, why the regular driver's on vacation. There's many situations that could arise to cause that.
Mr. Mascaro?
Sure. Similarly to, to what Waste Management just said, going a step back, we log every call that comes in into a customer service system on, on the computer, which our general manager then will review on really a weekly, depending on the type of contract or a monthly basis. And from there, we would then develop a, a hot list as well that would then be given to, not to our drivers per se, but we would give that to our route supervisor that would be in the township for supervising every collection. And then they would actually make sure that those hot lists or hot residents are collected appropriately. So it's similar, it's just I think we got, ours is a little different. We like to get a little higher level of management involved in, in the satisfaction of those types of issues.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone online?
I just want to make sure, I think JP took this for granted. Every time one of our trucks comes into the neighborhood, we have a route supervisor that is in the township, and our policy is pretty routine where that route supervisor, before he leaves the township, will tech, will touch base with whoever the township dedicates, not your manager, but some administrative individual to coordinate, to say the trucks are going to leave, have you got any calls? Because we want the calls, but as you well know, sometimes you get the calls. But that's really proven to be a successful method for us to make sure that if there are misses and they're reported before our trucks leave, we get them rather than trying to get them the next day.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Can you hear us, Cindy?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you just identify your name again for the record.
Okay, my name is Cindy Smith. I live at 2442 Huckleberry Road. And I, first of all, want to comment on Monica's comment, and I totally agree. Customer support service is utmost important. My experience with Waste Management has been nothing but a nightmare. I email them, they tell me, oh, we picked it up and they didn't, or we'll pick it up on a certain day and they don't. That's worth something, in my opinion. I understand, and I'm not speaking for the whole township, but I'd rather pay, either I go on their payroll or I'll pay them, or pay someone extra that I don't have to email since 2022 to have our recycling and garbage picked up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Marie, if you would give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Marie North. My address is 3025 Victoria Lane. And I have a, a comment and then a question. On my comment, I believe Commissioner Osborne asked, what can we do as citizens here in South Whitehall to kind of help ourselves in regard to the increases? And I believe what both gentlemen there said about the price of the toters. And my experience has been, I've had both of my toters, recycling and trash toters, for 15 years, and neither one has cracked or broken. But I, we try to follow the rules that, that the hauler puts out there that says, please separate the two containers so that the trucks can actually get in there and with the arms lift them. And please don't have trash sticking out of the top of the containers. And when I drive around the township on various trash days, I'm seeing all kinds of interesting ways that these toters are being packed with trash. So maybe it's an education thing for some of our residents. So maybe it's an education thing for some of our residents. And then my, my question would be, I think both companies, JP Mascaro and Waste Management, have, are doing some different or innovative things in regard to recycling. So I'm wondering, are we going to be able to recycle perhaps different items or additional items that we are not able to recycle at this point?
Thank you for your question. Tom, can I ask you to clarify our bid specification regarding recycling? Were there any changes made to what is allowable?
No, it would be under, what is permitted under the Solid Waste and Recycling Act at the state level.
Okay.
Yeah, what's constituted a single stream or co-mingled.
Would like to add to that. However, our recycling plant does offer a very unique option, and we've offered this to all the communities that we service. We handle flexible packaging. So there are lots of plastics that are made in the ordinary course of, of, of the day at a household, whether it be the inside of cereal boxes, the wrappings that go around, water bottles, the dog food bags, the potato chip bags, plastic bags from the grocery store, which are being, you know, banned in certain communities. All of those things are acceptable in our recycling system, and all of those things are recovered, and we make a commodity called RFLEX at our recycling plant. We're one of the only plants in the United States that makes that commodity, and we then sell that product to markets to be made into, into further things. Sam mentioned that we've been, we've received grants. We received about $6 million in grants from Fortune 50 companies in the world to install this equipment at our plant, and we've kind of become the test and model for recovering this flexible packaging from communities in Eastern Pennsylvania. And we do that, and certainly we would, I know it's not part of the specification, but it is, it is a, a recycling option that would be made available to you if we are your vendor.
Thank you. Waste Management, did you want to make a comment on that one?
Right now, our facility is being designed and built, so currently, we're just accepting what the, what the standard recyclables were for the bid.
Very good, thank you. Marie North, did that answer your question? You still there? Okay.
Yes, it did, and, and thanks. And I was, I was hoping that, I believe it was the gentleman from Mascaro, I believe they're the ones that talked about the flexible packaging, and I was, I wasn't sure I was correct on that, so it's encouraging to hear it, and the fact that they have a market for it, that they're taking those materials and actually doing something with them. So to me, that's a benefit for all of us. So yeah, it, it did, it did answer my question. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anyone else in the audience? Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Tom, did you have any, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges?
I did have one last question, and it had to do with your question, Commissioner Osborne, what can we do? And I believe one of the answers I heard was senior discounts. Should we have hypothetically a list of eligible seniors that meet that criteria, and this is for both companies, does that discount come from you? If we provide it to you, does that discount come from you?
It's very difficult today. I'm not saying that there aren't seniors that certainly put out lesser trash, but it's very difficult today. The trash hauling is, is, trash hauling in recycling is, in many ways, like a utility, where you were servicing the whole township, you have a certain amount of tons that are being generated, and we're bidding a total price that needs to be distributed to the residents, okay? There can be senior discounts, but it's very difficult to track senior discounts. Should the age be 65? Should the age be 70 now? The other thing is, is with, with seniors, certainly, there's many seniors living in your community, but as you know, in today's society, many seniors are living with other, other people in the household that are in their family, so you don't know that it's just the seniors in the home and how much they're generating in trash. So it's very difficult to determine how much trash is coming from each unit. Your spec currently does not provide for, for a senior discount. You can internally try to, try to come up with an alternative to that after you, you send out your billings on that total number. But that's the best response I have for it, Monica. I'm not saying it is not available in certain specifications, but the hauler has to take into consideration what he's charging on a, on a, on a total, total basis, okay? It's not, it's not as if, you know, the seniors may be charged less, but then other residents could be charged more because you're picking up a total amount, okay? You're welcome.
I just had a question that a resident had asked of me regarding our toters, when they do damage and they're replaced by the hauler. Do you recycle the damaged toter once you take it back?
We absolutely do, yes.
Thank you. And same for Waste Management. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments or questions from the public or the board at this time, certainly vetted out, an awful lot of discussion and review at this time, is there a motion regarding the Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection Disposal and Recycling Services contract commencing January 1st, 2024?
I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion?
To, at the suggestion of our township manager, and also in putting the numbers in my head, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the five-year plan for JP Mascaro.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternate motion on the table?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item and have it placed on our September 6th, 2023 meeting agenda, which I believe would still fall before the 45-day requirement, where we have to, to take action on this bid.
Correct, the 45-day requirement, September 9th.
I would second that motion. I'll open it up to further discussion from the board before we go call for a vote.
My, my only comment is I'd, I'd like more time to digest this topic, to review the information we've been given. I appreciate both JP Mascaro and Waste Management for, for being here tonight. The information that both of you provided this evening was extremely helpful, and I know for me, I'd like to take it under advisement and come back on September 6th, the decision.
Excellent, I agree with your comments and your reasoning for tabling, and I also thank the citizens, both here in this meeting room as well as virtually, who posed questions to the board for our consideration as well. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? Is there any public comment before we call for the vote to table? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor of the motion to table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one to table this matter until the September 6th, 2023 regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you to both, both of you.
Thank you both of you.
Companies for all of your information and input. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, we have no executive sessions to schedule. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, another opportunity for courtesy of the floor, any member of the public may bring any matter before the board. Is there anyone here present with a question or comment? Anyone online with a question or comment? Hearing and seeing none, any motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, this motion is adjourned.